First and foremost, I want to offer a huge amount of gratitude to our Interim City Manager, Mr. Livingston. This re-envisioning of our retreat is a lot your vision and your idea, and I think that's a positive thing. This is doing it, as we said before, when we were all campaigning a year and a half ago now, we were going to do things a little bit differently because we want to do things in a better way that we're able to be a little bit more focused on the needs. So anyway, this is one piece of that. Matt, I think this is a really strong agenda. I think this is a good idea, and I strongly support it. Also, Mr. Joe Durham. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You and I intentionally, because we wanted to have a pure experience for you to be able to come over here and guide this group and offer some insight to this group, I just want to be transparent. You and I have not had any kind of briefing. We've not had any kind of preliminary conversation with you and I sitting down for me to kind of lay the lay of the land or anything like that. You're coming in here truly pure of heart, pure of mind, to help us wrap our heads around some issues that are going on in the city and issues that are going on that how we want to work with them. And I just wanted to say that, and I know that can be a little bit nerve wracking, but you're a professional. Good heavens, you've got an amazing resume behind you, and I look forward to your words and your wisdom.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you for being here. We will begin, as always, with an invocation. I believe I saw Archbishop Slater. There he is. If you would lead us in an invocation, and then after that, we'll move forward with pledge and then approval and agenda.
Good morning, everyone. I first want to start off by saying, sorry, I missed you the last two times due to some corrections and communication and reading. See, I found out reading is fundamental. But I also want to say, listen, you're representing the city. If this year we can learn anything, it's unity, oneness, because if one department fails, we all fail. As small as the sanitation, if they don't work, we all stink. So every department is important. So I encourage everyone, and when we go to do the business today, consider every part of the city. Let us pray. Our Father and our God, we thank you this morning that we can come together with the meeting of the minds. We dare not take it for granted, Lord, that we can come together. We look at the western parts of the state, God, we're so grateful. We can even look at California, God, we're so grateful. Now help us be able to help them and help each other and help the citizens of this great city. Father, we need you. Father, we ask you to give us the strength, give us the wisdom, as we have elected, God, strengthen their minds, strengthen their hearts, as they continue to even do your work in providing a place of desire and peace and safety. We thank you in advance for what you're getting ready to do. In Jesus' name, amen.
If you'd like to join me in the pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. I know it is not listed, but I'm confident this is the next step. Madam Clerk, would you please conduct a roll call?
Mayor Taylor.
Yeah, present.
Mayor Protem Jones.
Present.
Councilwoman Boyett.
Present.
Councilwoman Taylor.
Present.
Councilwoman Weeks.
Present.
Present.
Present. All right. And council, we will move towards an adoption of the agenda here in just a moment. Today and tomorrow are long days. There are breaks built in, but as Mr. Durham sees fit, he's going to move us around in different ways and different scheduled pieces. If you need to get up and use restroom, get up and use restroom. If you want to get another cup of coffee, go get another cup of coffee. This is our retreat. This is not a, this is not the hardest decorum piece of what we're going to do. I just wanted to get that kind of ground rules there. So if it's okay with council, I would suggest that we just simply relax the rules a little bit to allow for folks to get up and move around if they need to, with obviously being respectful of folks as they're talking. So with that, we'll move towards an adoption of the agenda. Council, an agenda has been distributed to you. It's a two-day agenda. At the end of today, we would simply recess and then reconvene in the morning. So it's one agenda, one meeting with a recess overnight. Are there any changes to the agenda from Madam Clerk or Mr. Livingston? Do you know? All right. Council, are there any requests or changes to the agenda as presented?
Mayor, council, I have a situation I want to discuss about the agenda. The personnel and organization focus and the MAG discussion is one of great importance to me. Yesterday, I was subpoenaed to be in court for a case today with the line of work that I do. The judge is aware that we have this retreat today, and so the judge has asked for me to come in at four o'clock. I'm wondering, is there any way that this could be shifted? If it cannot be shifted, I want the council to know that I have some concerns and some questions concerning the MAG, and I would really like to be a part of that discussion.
I think once we take some time to look at that and see what we can do.
Right.
We'll proceed on, but I think we'll take a little time to look at what we might be able to do.
Right.
I need to think about how to do that.
Okay. But I know we want to. Let's get through our morning sessions, and at the break, we'll try to have a conversation and see what we can come back, and then at that time, we'll come back and ask for a motion to amend the agenda, once you figure out the right way to do it. Anybody else? All right, hearing none. With the caveat expressed by Councilwoman Weeks, is there a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
All right, motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion's been made and properly seconded to adopt the agenda as presented with the caveat of the requested change of the sessions between 3:30 and 5:00 today to be relocated somewhere else on the agenda that we will work through later this morning. All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, same sign. Seeing none, motion passes. All right. So with that, Mr. Livingston, I believe you are our first, and then I'll let you introduce Mr. Durham and get us going.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. Good morning, everyone. I appreciate everybody's time here. I know that your time is very valuable, and it asks a lot when we're asking you to be here for two days, but the subject matter that we're going to talk about requires a lot of thought and attention, and it's not just things that, you know, we would normally handle within the course of, say, one business meeting. So they're kind of, those kind of materials, heavy materials that we need some action on. So we're going to start off kind of where we left off last year in the sense that we identified priorities, and 2024 was a good year, your first year as council members, and I think we accomplished a lot of things. We were starting out, for example, I think the chief can sort of echo in here, but, you know, almost 40 officers short. Now we're, we've cut that number in half as far as what the staffing levels are. We're down to about 19 officers short. And so that was our number one priority, violent crime and gang activity. One of the challenges we had was being able to curb this gang activity, the violence and things like that, without the proper number of officers on the streets to be able to get the jobs done. So we've made some headway there. So today's little session for me is just to kind of tee up the existing priorities and see if we need to reorder those or add to them or subtract some of them. So I'm going to briefly go over those that are in your packet and talk about where we're at with some of them. So generally speaking, our number one priority, violent crime and gang activity, we've made headway there. We've created a special task force unit in conjunction with the county to sort of target the areas where we've seen violent crime and upticks in that area, and that's trending in the right direction. We have a lot of more work to do there, so we're nowhere near where we need to be, but, you know, you don't do this overnight, but we've made tremendous progress in one year. Your second priority was city finances and overall financial health. You'll hear a lot about this through Ted Cole and Davenport and also from Catherine, our finance director, but in general, you know, our fund balance over the last five or six years has gone from literally 10% of unassigned fund balance to over 40%, which is just tremendous. So, and in addition, we've caught up with all our audits, and we've done very well. We don't have any major findings. So we've, I tell people, the city's finances are strong, and there's not any glaring material weaknesses that were found in our audits, and we have strong policies and procedures, and the LGC has recognized that. We still have to get off the unit assist list. That's going to be a matter of time. I think we qualify for that, but that's not our decision. So that's still an area that, you know, we're going to always monitor. The third priority, homelessness and unhoused. So one of your priorities was to dive into this issue, and so the police department has done that with the help of some others. We disbanded, disbanded the Tent City area, which was a longtime area that people around here know that was an unhoused encampment with lots of other issues going on there as well. I don't want to say that we've been successful with the unhoused. We're like a lot of other cities throughout this country. It's an epidemic that this country and others are faced with, but we've made progress. This is going to have to be a much more collaborative effort in order for us to be successful, meaning that we have to have our other partners and nonprofits, as well as, I believe, the county. I think it's one of those things, because when they're unhoused inside the city of Goldsboro, they're also unhoused in the county as well. So those are areas that we've made some progress with, but we haven't, you know, it's a challenging issue. We haven't solved that issue. Job creation and economic development. We worked, we've, I think we've improved our relationship with Wayne County Development Alliance, which is our major partner in working with economic development, recruitment within our various business parks and various areas throughout the city. So I think we're making progress there, especially with our relationships and some of the policies we've come forth with that. The fifth expansion, wastewater treatment plant, I'm sorry, the fifth priority was wastewater treatment plant expansion. So we have signed a notice to proceed with the engineering firm and the contractor to do a 30% design. They're also going to be here to talk about that with you and show you where we're at. Again, that's one of those items that without the expansion of the wastewater treatment plant, at some point, we don't know exactly when, we're running our models, but as we continue to grow, we're going to need to expand that wastewater treatment plant. So it's incumbent upon us to do the appropriate planning, because it doesn't, it's not something you can snap your fingers and say you build an expansion. There's a lot of permitting requirements, there's a lot of designing requirements, and you have to jump through a lot of hoops in order to get those things done, so it takes several years, and we want to go ahead and plan for that so we have a design ready and a project ready so that we can hit the ground running and so that we don't have to worry about any future moratoriums, and we can accommodate future growth and develop, not just for economic development, but for new housing and things like that that we anticipate are coming our way. Affordable housing. I think we've made progress here because we've approved some more areas of affordable housing. Some of them are not yet under construction, but we have done some areas there. Employee recruitment and retention, that was number eight. We've put some policies in place, I think, that are helping that. I'm seeing the recruitment and retention pattern improve within the city of Goldsboro. It's still can, it still can get better, but we've made progress there as well. City beautification and appearance, I don't know that we've really made any inroads on that one yet, but that was, the other one with number 10 was maintaining general fund infrastructure. That's a huge category. We've talked about here lately with our roads. We talked about, you know, we know the condition of the roads, where we're at with, we just did our pavement condition rating index. Those are obviously items that we are concerned about in many of the infrastructure areas that we have, whether it be buildings, roads, or just other types of infrastructure, including water and sewer, which is our number 11 priority. And then police, fire, public safety equipment, and then parks and recreation, open space planning, community cultural relations is 14, and 15 was quality of life opportunities for youth. So we've put together a little bit more condensed list with the help of Kelly, and we've also got, you know, maybe new priorities, so that the point of this morning is to kind of openly discuss all those priorities, and then we're going to do a priority polling exercise where we're going to have you guys rank these different ones that we have and the ones you come up with and see what order they come out in. Does anybody have any questions for me? The other thing I really kind of wanted to do before I do that is, is again, introduce Joe. Very grateful for him being here. He's with the League. Joe and I know each other over 20-plus years. I worked with him when I was in Rollsville. He was the deputy county manager of Wake County, so actually Joe's one of my mentors. So when they mentioned him, I was like, wow, that couldn't, couldn't get any better for somebody to help facilitate our retreat. So he's going to take it from there, and he's going to talk to you about these priorities and any new priorities that you have, but I'll open it up for any questions from the council.
Council, any comments, questions so far? All right. Continue.
Thank you. Joe?
All right.
Flow is yours.
Thanks a lot, Matt. I appreciate it. Thanks for those kind comments. Joe Durham, and I'm with the North Carolina League of Municipalities, and it is a pleasure and honor to be with you today. And you will notice that I'm likely to spend a lot of time at this podium, because we walk around a lot trying to get you engaged. The, my, let me just, first of all, say congratulations to all of you for being elected and being representatives of your, of the great city of Goldsboro. That's a significant commitment to make, is a significant commitment for you to have a retreat. And let me say that there are a lot of jurisdictions who don't do this, so I commend you for being a part of that. I have had the opportunity, as alluded to, working with lots of cities and towns through the years, 30 years in local government, 10 years as a consultant. Want everybody to know, I started work when I was 12, so don't try to add the numbers up. So, but again, I appreciate the opportunity to do retreats, and I've done a lot of those, and this is actually, I've got four scheduled for this season. So this is significant. This is, gives you the opportunity to talk among yourselves, talk to staff, establish priorities, and this is how you get stuff done. My role today was, is to act as a timekeeper, a facilitator. Again, it's important to talk and let your neighbor, your commissioner, your fellow councilman know what's going on, what you're thinking about. This is your retreat. It is not Matt's. It's not mine. It's not staff's. This is yours. And also, it's important, just again, you guys have been involved with this, you know what's going on with it, and it's important for us to respect one another, to, again, I'm going to look for consensus, and I want there to be discussion, and it's important for that to be open to that. It's important to be have participation and inclusion, and I want all of us to have a positive focus on this as we move forward. Again, this is your retreat. All right. So as Matt has talked about, we're looking at the council priorities that were established in 2425, want to go through each one of those and ask you if there are any comments or feedback, or Matt's giving you an update on where you are with each one of those, and then our intent here is, do we need to modify some of these? Do we need to add additional priorities? Is this where you want to go for the future? Let's start with violent crime and gang activity. Is there anything okay with that? You feel good? Okay.
Do we want to get any statement from the police chief on that, or do you feel like that's needed at this time?
Hold the shot.
I think it would be good just to kind of, chief, if you can kind of give an overview of a little bit, if you have time, to kind of, I know it's winging it, but just what you've been doing the last year or so.
Is he here or from?
Up at the podium so we can get it.
Yeah, I really don't have a lot to add. I mean, one of the things that we did this summer, I mean, y'all recall when we came before council, or I came before council, when we had that uptick in the violent crime in the neighborhoods. We rounded up some officers from different divisions, which took away from patrol, it took away from investigations, it took away from some of our other units, and we stood our SEU unit up and really concentrated on data that we had in-house to put our officers in areas that we were seeing the most issues. And we did that for the course of the summer, and it was very effective for us. Some of our numbers, the overall crime rate or Part 1 crimes as we were tracking, about February or March, we were tracking for about a 41% increase in Part 1 crimes for the year. Our ShotSpotter or Sound Thinking alerts were pretty much off the charts. It was pretty high. So we instituted that over the summer and started concentrating on where the problems were, what we believe from the data where the problems were. Our crime overall for the year actually went down 5%, so that was a significant drop, and I put a lot of that credit with our SEU unit. Also, our ShotSpotter alerts or Sound Thinking alerts, those were down 43% over the previous year, over 2023. So we were seeing a bunch of positive numbers from that unit being stood up, and again, it's looking at the data, seeing where our issues are in the community, and then acting on those. But that's not our long-term goal. Our long-term goal now is to kind of shift our focus, maintain that unit to work with the data, but also put more community projects in place to help the youth. We're seeing a lot of the youth that are in these gangs, young people. I mean, we're talking young people, 11, 12-year-olds that are in, getting in these gangs, and I think as a city, we need to have more programs in place for the youth, to capture the youth. As a department, we need to have SROs back into our schools. So that's come, some of the angles that we're trying to come at, get our SROs back in the schools, get some programs into these areas during the summer, that's where we see an increase in our youthful offenders and our gang activity, because the summertime, people are out of school, there's a lot more free time, idle time on these individuals' hands, and that's where we kind of see a spike. So we've got to do a better job of working with other entities within the city to focus on our young people and our gangs and to get programs in place to make a difference in these kids' lives and citizens in general. We've said it before, and I've said it, and I'll say it again, we can't police our way out of this problem, but right now, we've got to be focused on being where the problems are and handle it from, you know, the policing aspect, but long-term, we've got to put programs in place with our partners that'll make a difference in these kids' lives. Blight, another thing, gangs, they go to areas that aren't well-maintained or aren't, you know, there's a lot of vacant homes and stuff like that, and we can do a better job as a department, working with other departments in the city to identify the blight and clean it up. So kind of think as the police department is not doing police work sometimes, it's doing the city's work to help other departments to get after the community and make a difference. So I don't know if that addressed your questions about gangs and violence, but it kind of goes hand in hand, so that's pretty much what I've got at this point.
Thank you, chief.
You're welcome.
Questions for chief?
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thanks, chief. Next one is city finances and overall financial health. Matt's given you a, where our progress has been made. Matt did mention that the city is still on the unit assistance list as determined by the local government commission. The goal is obviously to move forward in that area. Any questions about city finances at this stage or the city's overall financial health? We moving in the right direction?
I think that we are. I think that we are. I think that it is, it's come at a cost, because that's, anytime you're growing your general fund, you're pulling money out of money that's just cash flowing, that's just moving around, and I think that has an economic, an economic reality tied to it. But the situation that we were in versus where we are today, it had to happen, and the work of getting the audits called up, the work of getting our HUD audits called up, the work of getting our finances in a place where that we can go out for bond financing if we so choose this year or next year, being able to make investments and runs. Yeah, it's, we're in a very different place than we were two years ago.
Okay.
And I don't want to dominate this conversation. Matt made it very clear that I need to make sure that I'm yielding, you're running, you're running the show, you're running this conversation, and I don't want to dominate conversation, but I'm in it every day, and I can talk too much, so someone else say something, and then I'll stay quiet.
I'll make sure I monitor you.
Thank you.
Don't worry about it.
I appreciate that.
All right. Ms. Jones, I think you want to say something?
I think we're heading in the right direction. I think that we really need to really buckle down and take a look at how we're using every avenue of finances at this point. I don't like to echo people, because I feel like, you know, it's just one statement being said, but I think we're doing well. I think we need to end going forth, like I said, we need to take a look at every avenue of our finances and making sure that we are accountable in how we spend our money and how we monitor it. And holding each area financed accountable.
Okay. Very good. Other comments, questions on finances at this stage? Everybody comfortable with the direction we're going in that area then? Okay? Very good. Move on to homelessness and unhoused. This is a issue or a challenge for every city with, any major city in the United States, and so lots of evidence underway. Feedback, comments of where we are right now? Yes, ma'am?
I don't, we, I don't think, I know that we're not as for, as, I know that we did work with Tent City, but Moon House out of there has presented more problems in many of our districts, and I don't like to go into anybody else's. more problems in many of our districts, and, and I don't like to go into anybody else's district, because, in many of our districts, and, and I don't like to go into anybody else's district, because I respect everybody's district. But it has caused other things to happen, has caused other things to happen. They have moved into other areas of the district, uh, in some instances, it, uh, has caused, uh, arson, uh, because, uh, whenever you're cold and then you're, and whenever you're in a, when you're squatting in, or you fall asleep, and, um, some houses burned. I think that we have not done, and it's, it's, I'm not blaming the council, uh, but I think that we've not done all that we can do, and I am one, I'm, I'm pointing my finger at myself as well. We haven't done all that we can do for the unhoused. There are so many houses sitting here that we could, um, uh, redevelop, uh, for the unhoused, so I think that's something that we need to take a look at as a council and see what we can do to help out unhoused, because, um, they're always going to be with us, but we can always, um, continue to move forth, trying to provide housing, because they belong to us, and we need to do all that we can. I'm, uh, very pleased with the tiny houses that has come up a, around our city. I am pleased with a lot of the resources that we do have, but we need to take a closer...
Very good. We've got comments. Next one is job creation, economic development. Next one is job creation, economic development. Lifeblood of any community.
Can I go back to homelessness?
Let's go back, hold on a second, I'm sorry.
Um, from a different, um, point of view, I believe that there has been some, um, advantages to shutting down Tent City.
Okay.
Um, I believe that we are a city that has some strong benefits working together in our community, and by, um, forcing Tent City to shut down, a lot of these people were, um, relocated into rehabs or to safe houses, and so I have seen, um, personally, the advantages of that. Also, um, our Salvation Army is looking at possibly, um, opening back up their shelter. We've got DJ Kohl's, 4-Aid Movement, so, um, resources, we, we are a city that we actually have great resources for the unhoused community. They just have to want the resources, and so that's just a different, um, perspective on the unhoused, um, and the homelessness.
What you're, what I'm hearing you saying, we need to continue our focus in that area. Do more, utilize those resources, or create additional resources.
Yes.
Okay.
And I agree with that.
Okay. Good. Anything else on homelessness, unhoused? Okay, with the direction we're going in. Okay. Next one there, again, is, uh, job creation, economic development. Economic development, lifeblood of any community, movement forward, job creation, tax-based investment, et cetera, et cetera.
We think that, uh, in this, this department, I think we could do a lot better job, I think. We're not, we're providing certain jobs or part-time jobs, I think it is, you know, gas stations, convenience stores and that thing, we are developing those things, but I also had our economic development in our model, so that we can grow jobs that pay a livable wage, where people can only work one job, so they can be more focused with, with child learning and other things in that area. So, I think that we can do a better job, and also creating jobs and economic development the entire city, and not just portions of the city. So, I think we can do better with that.
All right. There is a, an overall, Matt, I'm looking at you, an overall economic development initiative that the city has, or?
So, we, we partner with the Wayne County Development Alliance to do, uh, which would be large, more large-scale economic development, you know, people call it the buffalo hunt. So, when they, you know, ask for RFI's, request for information, we provide those, and we work closely with the Senate packages with the Wayne County Development Alliance. Those would be more industrial sector jobs. Other types of, uh, opportunities that we sometimes get are, you know, it could be like, say, I'd love to have a Home Depot, so actually have our staff sometimes reaching out to places like that to see if we can try to recruit them. But the other thing is, is we do not have a dedicated economic development office in, in the city of Goldsboro. We, and that's one of the reasons why we're talking about a business development plan, so that we can, uh, look at what, you know, the niches, uh, that are falling through the cracks, because we do do a good job with travel and tourism, we do do a good job with our downtown, but what about the areas outside of that, outside of just the industrial recruitment that we do? And those are, that's why we want to talk about a business development plan, and what that might look like.
All right.
Yeah, I want to emphasize that the reason that council invests every year with the Wayne County Development Alliance is for industrial recruitment, which has been very successful over the last few years, and has a lot of stuff in the pipeline. You know, I, I praise council for the work that we did, uh, revising the tax structure around the, uh, now the Wayne County Business Campus, everyone, Paytown Road, and Park East Industrial Park, which makes that a more, uh, a more attractive place. We've got rail infrastructure coming to the industrial park. We've got multiple bids on different buildings that are out there. Now, as a seat on that, it's currently held by Councilman Boyett, uh, for the Development Alliance. I also want to praise this council for, uh, this year doing a business development plan, something that is made, uh, that I, I think is really important, because exactly as, as already been stated, it allows us to look at all, all of the other parts of the city. It allows us to take a look off of Center Street, off of Berkeley, what are the other parts of the city that are, are really begging for commercial and residential development? It's those neighborhood business-style things, and we're not interested in competing with Wayne County Development Alliance, I want to be very clear about that. You know, we're not looking at it, at responding to RFI's and competition with them, but then we're fortunate to have them in our regional approach with the Global Transport Economic Development Region, but it, this, this council in this, in this last year has put, put more into that than I think some, some previous years have, and are, are on the precipice of yielding some significant results as well.
Okay. Very good. Yes, ma'am?
Uh, Mr. Durham, I'm curious to know a little bit more about the economic development initiative you mentioned. I know our city manager spoke to the fact that we don't have that department, but I don't think that should be a reason we lack this, if you think that's something that would be beneficial for us to have.
Well, I, I, I'm not going to say whether that particular item is beneficial, but I, I think that in order to be effective, based upon the comments that you've made, based upon my experience, it is something that needs to be tackled from all different angles, and again, having the, the industrial development, the recruitment for the larger organizations, but also small business development is, you know, to get it back to what Mr. White made, is also essential and important for us in, in terms of moving forward, creating job. Most jobs that are created are from what? Smaller businesses, not, not the large ones. And so, it is, uh, something that is, is an option, is an opportunity for, for the city, and again, if you're looking at creating economic development opportunities, it's important to use everything that's in your tool, tool, to kit. So, good point. Other comments?
I'll chime in for a minute if I could, Mr. Mayor. I think it's important, as, uh, our interim manager, Mr. Livingston, pointed out a few minutes ago, that we make sure when we're speaking of economic development and also business development, that it's important that we keep and differentiate between those two items, because, uh, industrial, uh, development and business development are two different things, and I'm, I'm excited to hear from, um, Ms. Darlington with her presentation, with what we're working on, trying to improve and move forward with a business development, uh, plan for the city of Goldsboro. Of course, as pointed out, we participate as the lead city in the county, county seat in the county's development, uh, industrial, economic development. I do sit on that, that committee, and I've been involved with economic development with that organization since 2003. Um, there, there's a lot of things that go on, there's a lot of good things that go on. I usually speak most of the time during my comment period, at least touch on it. Um, there, there's been some, some significant steps forward in the last few years, as, as the mayor sort of pointed out, and there's some exciting things going on. The wheels are always turning there. Um, I think we're going to have, hopefully, someone from the, uh, Development Alliance is going to be able to come speak to us for a minute before the retreat's over. The president of the, um, WCDAs was supposed to be here, but he has a, a child that's under the weather, and he's not going to be able to join us.
Okay.
But I hope someone will from that organization. So, there, just as long as we make sure that we keep that difference between business development and economic development.
Okay. I think we're going to be able to get him on Zoom, so.
Oh, fabulous.
We, we, we're working on that.
Okay.
Um, and just the last but not least with that, uh, again, I think we've made excellent, excellent progress, um, and particularly in the last 12 months with some of the stuff that's going on, not, not only things that have been spoke on publicly, like some of the collaboration and partnership that we've been able to do with the state recognizing our industrial park, um, and, and having it promoted at the state level. Um, but just in general, for the last year, as was spoke to, uh, earlier, and I know we've heard from, um, our first two topics, it's on the list there, and I, I can't, I, I'm just, uh, I know we've got a lot more work to do, but what we've been able to do in 12 months, and, and I, I use the term all the time about moving the needle, we've absolutely moved the needle, anyone can see that, and I'm, I'm proud to be a part of that. I know we've got more work to do, but the, the needle's moving on, on a lot of stuff. Including economic development, and I'm excited about the business development piece.
I think the Councilman White's point, and I understand the dilemma he's talking about, it, it's a challenge that a lot of communities face, is how do you get investment into your lower-income areas where there hasn't been now for decades? And, um, and there, there's where the jobs are needed mostly. So, I totally get his point, and I want to be able to do that. The challenge is, how do you do that?
Right. And I, and I do agree with all the statements that was made, we have moved the needle, but however, the, the fact remains that although we moved the needle, most of our constituents, 56% of them, however, are, are still struggling to make ends meet. So, that's why I said that we need to do more. It's not that we haven't done anything, it's just that we need to do more, because they're still feeling it at the, at the pump, or even on this side of town where we at, we reside at right now, where we at right now, they're feeling the struggle, and I understand that we have moved the needle, and I'm proud of the things that we've done in the last 12 months, but I just don't want us to sit on our laurels and think that we, we've done enough, because we do need to do more, because people are still struggling with that.
Okay. Duly noted.
And, and I couldn't agree more with, with that statement, and I, I think that, that all of us as a group would, are looking forward to seeing business development and development in, in general, get in and go into some of our areas that traditionally have, have struggled with, with having new development and redevelopment. Um, and I think we're, we're stepping as a group in the right direction with that as well, because as we all know, we, you know, we've got crime issues and things that go on that prevent development in certain areas, when particularly with commercial, not industrial development, but with commercial development, when you have a opportunity and the developer says, where, where do I need to go for the best outcome for my business? They're going to look for exactly that. Where can I put this business for the best outcome? And I think in order to see, uh, some of our areas that have struggled with any sort of redevelopment, it's, it's important to keep moving the needle on, um, cleaning some things up, and I mean that from a broad, a broad perspective, meaning blight and crime and one thing or another that the chief spoke to earlier, that's a step in the right direction in order to open the door and pave the way for redevelopment and business development opportunities within some of our areas that are traditionally not resolved.
Right. Okay.
If I could, if I could add another thing on this one, on the economic development piece, there's, there are still some bottlenecks in our processes for being able to open a business in Goldsboro, and whether it's things, you know, like revising how we handle parking lots, being able to do crush-and-run parking lots for parking lots up to a certain size, or if it is, or whatever it is, we've really got to do a better job of understanding where those bottlenecks are, and I, I don't know if it is policy issues, or if it's interpretation of those policy issues, but when, when you have, when you have multiple investors that want to invest in businesses and different, and sometimes residential, in different parts of town, that reach out and say, we're, we're being told we, we can't do X, we can't do Y, and the thing they're being told they can't do is something that really isn't offensive. I think we've got to do a better job of getting things to council to vote on, you know, getting revisions to ordinances, if that's what it takes, to council that we can vote on and move forward and be able to change ordinances, if those, if there are reasonable changes to ordinances that need to be made. You know, I'll use the parking lot example, because that's something I've been clamoring about for a year and a half. There, uh, we, we've got to do, we've got to do a better job of getting things through business, through planning inspections as part of a development services model.
And again, not one to put words in your mouth, trying to, not trying to do that, but trying to summarize, could that include, or would that include, a review of the, the development review process that, that city currently has?
Yeah.
And, man, I'm creating some work for you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm.
He's aware.
And, and also, uh, again, having a customer service focus, perhaps is what you're saying too, so, all right, okay.
I promise I didn't, I didn't plant these phrases, but you're, you're, you're literally mirroring the words that, that arose from this council.
It's, it's, it's another tool, which we hear all the time from elected officials, from developers, is that it's, it's hard to do business for the city.
Right.
Okay, I hear it all the time. Trying to create affordable housing, trying to open up a new business, trying to build a subdivision, it's just a lot of red tape to go through, but we are, we work in government. They're just built-in processes.
And red tape can be important, because we need to make sure that things are properly vetted, because ultimately, our constituents are going to be the ones that are living with the fallout.
Correct.
I respect that there needs to be some red tape, I just want to make sure it's red tape for the right reasons.
Okay. All right. I think we, we captured that up here. Yeah. So, duly noted about that, and again, lots, when we talk about economic development, it's, there's a lot of different, different types of things, different initiatives will come up. Matt, we, we got that one noted then, right?
Yep. I think we're good.
All right. Anything else on job creation, economic development? Yes, ma'am?
Um, so my thoughts are, maybe if we can look at what kind of incentives that, incentives that we can, um, open up to businesses that are willing to put businesses inside, uh, parts of town that have nothing, because I look at, I kind of compare it to, um, people that have like pride of ownership, you know, you, you are proud of what you own, you take care of it, but when you have, when you have people that, that live in certain areas and they look around and, and they see nothing, they feel destitute, you know, they're going to treat, they're going to, they're not going to treat it as well, but if you, if you have businesses coming in and, uh, they're parts of the neighborhood looking up, they'll, they'll feel better and they'll treat it better. And maybe that'll help improve things.
Okay.
And then once, you know, commercial developers see other businesses coming in and doing well, because there's plenty of money on this side of town for, if you put a McDonald's or put a grocery store, people are going to spend money.
Okay.
If we can just get someone to give it a chance. Right now, no, no one wants to give it a chance because of the crime.
Okay. Is there a current, Matt, a current business incentive, business development?
Uh, no, but we did do a choice neighborhood study, this is mostly District 1, which could be incorporated into other districts where we have disinvestment, and there's a numerous incentives in those, uh, things, I think, you know, tax increment, financing, and things like that. There are suggestions, and I think there's some really good suggestions in those, and I think that could be a model within our business development plan to use those incentives. So, I, I agree with what she's saying, we just have to, uh, agree as a group what, what those incentives look like, uh, and mostly I would think they would be sort of like tax increment financing type of things like that.
Okay. Very good. Anything else you know about?
To piggyback on that, I think it's important to, to point out that when Ms. Darlington comes up and, and presents, the business development model that we're trying to figure out would, would certainly, uh, address or be part of the solution to address, um, some, some of that development, and as was pointed out with some of the... And as was pointed out with some of the, with choice neighborhoods and things of that nature. We also have McNair Heights, which right is, in its beginning stages, is going to be a single family housing. But there is a, the end game there, there's a commercial component. And there'll eventually be, as part of that, the way the project is envisioned is there'll be some commercial development that goes along with that. But it certainly comes, comes after the residential development. And just to step back on the planning issue or part of that, we, we've been having a lot of discussion, active discussion for the last year or so about trying to figure out how to reorganize our developmental services in order to get that process to flow a lot quicker than it has. Because that is a continual concern of developers is red tape. What can we do better within the organization to just make things flow, flow easy?
Right, right.
And so I think we're headed in the right direction with that, at least at this stage.
Okay.
We're headed in the right direction. There's a lot, a lot of good, good things going and the wheels that are turning.
Okay.
And stuff, so.
Very good. Other comments, questions at this stage on that one? Okay, good, good discussion guys, thanks. Next one, wastewater treatment plan expansion. Matt talked about that, where we are in that process. Questions about that? Right direction, we're okay?
Absolutely. I feel like that's a wonderful step forward with our expansion for wastewater that we've got coming is, is that, that's in my opinion at the top of the list. When it comes to economic development, we have a plan in place to, this three and a half million gallon expansion that's happening is going to continue to move us forward in terms of what we can do so far as economic development and residential growth as well, of course, in the city. And we're, we have another expansion that's just on paper at this point. But another expansion, you know, that can come along behind that. And I think it would be, I mean, that puts us in a super position in this area, particularly Wayne County and the city of Goldsboro as far as being able to expand when, when we look around us and there are other communities that, that simply can't expand, that can't even build a one more house in their, you know, because of their moratorium or the restrictions related to their infrastructure. And I think that we, with the city of Goldsboro, are absolutely headed in the right direction with that. Like I said earlier, there's so many good things going on that sometimes we overlook those sometimes.
Well, I agree, economic development, having that wastewater capacity is, is, is essential leading to development. Affordable housing. Matt gave you a summary of that, what's going on in that area. Right direction, feel good, feel okay?
I think we wrestle with this one because we simultaneously have some low quality housing intermixed throughout the city, some of which is, is private side, some of which is, is public side. Through, we have two different housing authorities that operate inside the city of Goldsboro. The residents that live in, in those areas deserve just as safe a quality of life as, as anybody else. And so this is something that, that we, that we struggle with. We, I think there are, I think there are those that are interested in doing more private side development as well. We have to, you know, have to have a balance of housing across the spectrum. But I think this is something that more, more options are coming to us for affordable housing right now than there are developers, developers that are interested in doing full large scale market rate things.
Okay.
So I think that that right now is probably the, the most likely to happen housing development inside the city for the foreseeable future.
All right. Feel okay with the direction we're going in?
I do worry about the word affordable in workforce because people get so confused about what are you talking about? Are you talking about public housing, you're talking about workforce housing? You know, and to be very clear, what I was referring to is those houses that are, there may be some sort of subsidy or some sort of income tiered rent. But it's for folks that are employed, that are working, making 25 to 55 kind of, kind of employment structure.
Are we, are we comfortable with, you know, you made, you made a great point. When we define, when we have listed as a priority or a goal, we say affordable housing.
Affordable to who?
Yeah, and again, what, what does it mean? Have Matt, has that been defined in some?
We have, and you know, we're, we're an entitlement city, Joe. So we do get CDVG allotments and we have to follow those HUD guidelines in order we, to make, like for example, what Chris, Councilman Boyett was talking about. Habitat for Humanity wants to do a subdivision expansion. Those houses have to meet the LMI criteria. So, and, and so we, we've established those definitions. And I think the council's aware of that. We have a lot of public housing through the housing authorities, two, two of them, which they don't really operate on a voucher system as much as we actually have a bunch of housing at physical units that are in many cases in need of repair. And I know they're trying to get funds to get those repaired. And they're building some, you know, replacement housing. But I think the general consensus of this council, and I want to speak for them, is those type of, we need reinvestment with new housing, not more concentrated structures that have ended up historically ending in, ending up creating more blight.
Yeah, I was at a meeting yesterday with affordable housing with HUD and how that funding on those traditional units continues to go down. And a lot of issues in this repair. HUD continues to shrink the budget on those. So that's going to be a challenge for lots of communities going forward. Okay, next one, anything else on affordable housing? Employee recruitment and retention has been a challenge for nonprofits, businesses, local governments, and et cetera. Will continue to be a challenge in getting top talent. You've got to pay for them. One of the things we'll talk about later on is the pay study. So any other issues or concerns headed in the right direction there? Employee retention and recruitment?
I think the salary study's a wise move. I'll also add that we just had another new employee orientation earlier this week in one of the rooms right here. It was packed.
Good.
So there, I know new employees are being onboarded. We know we've, specifically with employees, we know those numbers. And I know the number of service awards that we signed and awarded at the employee holiday, holiday breakfast. And the number of 10, 15, 20 year certificates was the largest chunk of that stack. We've got to do more because we don't want to lose the supervisors that we could lose. But painting with a wide brush, I do think we're pointed in the right direction.
Okay. Any other comments on that one? All right. Next one is city beautification and appearance. Okay with that one? Feel good?
I'll go first.
Okay. All right.
We've got a lot of work left to do in, in that regard. We, as, as this council knows, we, we have struggled with, due to personnel issues and struggled with having adequate personnel to address code enforcement. There's been budget challenges, particularly in, before we came on as a new council, with budget challenges, with providing money for housing demolition for, to, to help with blight and things of that nature. So again, the, the needle's moving in that. We're going to hear some of that. I think we're going to hear a list of during this retreat of the property set for demolition, which is the first time that's happened in several years. General beautification, I know I spoke several times. We, we used to have an appearance commission and it was disbanded for lack of participation. And I'm very interested in putting that, standing that back up. And I have some, some folks that have come to me who are ready to serve on that when we get to that point. But we, we've got work to do as a city and as a council to get the, the proper people and the proper funding in place in order to start making a dent. And so we've got a lot of work left to do, in my opinion, there.
Okay.
Because we're just getting started again, you know, so far as.
Very good.
Taking care of that.
Comments on that one? Okay. I'm going to lump the next two together. Maintain the general fund infrastructure as well as the water infrastructure maintenance. Going in the right direction there, feel good? Okay with that priority?
We've done a good job of assessing our inventory. Now we've got to figure out how to pay for it. We've got to figure out what, what partnerships are going to have to be in place. Is it going to have to be public-private partnerships? Is it going to have to be, you know, handout to the state, handout to, or hat in hand to the state and handout, or hat in hand to the Fed to try to get assistance? Is it, what is the tax rate that it's going to have to be to be able to do things? But we've done a good job of properly assessing the needs. And in some cases, properly assessing some options for funding because we've done a ton of grants this year. But that's going to be a big conversation today and tomorrow.
Okay, good. Any other comments on infrastructure? Water and sewer, general fund. All right, the next one is police, fire, public safety equipment.
Joe, if you don't mind, I think we just need to add not just police and fire, but just equipment in general because public works is also.
All right, police, fire, and public works?
Yes.
All right, let's add, see if we can add that to it. All right. Are we, we okay with that, with that one? Police, fire, public safety equipment, et cetera?
I think we, we've identified our needs.
Okay.
With the good thing about police department with growing now, we're coming into a shortage of vehicles and equipment for our office. So there's some things that we do need to address. I also think that our armed utilities, we have some outdated equipment that, that needs to be updated. And we can do better with that. But I do think that the council has been made aware of that. We're focused on trying to figure out how to address those needs.
So that has been, Matt, the city has a CIP, so has been included in the CIP?
Yes, and they will be discussed.
Very good. Community and cultural relations. Let me think about that one.
I think we still, we still got, got some growing to do in this department. I think we made some strides, but I also think that we, we have some, some places that we can improve in.
Okay.
As well.
Other comments, questions on that one?
I think that, I think that on a policy level, I think that we have, you know, I think we have good intent. But again, I think we've got to make sure that regardless of who is, is coming to the city, we got to, or to conduct business, we got to make sure that folks always feel valued and appreciated. I respect the work that the folks do, the job, their job title is community relations and development. I think they do wonderful work. And my hat's off, hat is off to them. But this is an area where the 85% of people can be basically fine. But those that have a bad experience, you got to fix. And, and we, we got to do a good job, I think a better job of quantifying when something goes wrong and assessing how we can fix it and be better.
Okay. All right. Uh, next one there is quality of life, more opportunities?
That's the business development plan.
Business development plan with that one?
But I also think that we need to, to define quality of life opportunities. I, I think because quality of life could be better on childcare services.
True.
You know what I'm saying? So I think that we really need to define what quality of life is and what we're actually working towards as a city.
Okay. Is that a definition? And then strategies perhaps that are associated with that one, okay?
Not, not certain, absolutely agree with Councilman White's comments. And I think with quality of life also would tie into what we're aware of as a council about trying to expand our parks and rec activities and which would also encompass that as well.
Okay.
I also think quality of life is very important. Affordable, I call it affordable living. We do need to define quality of life because in order to have a qual, a quality of life, you have to have, be able to afford what is happening in your community. You need to be able to afford housing. You need to be able to afford your electric bill. You need to be able to afford your water bill. So, um, quality of life, you know, we need to revisit quality of life because it also includes affordable living, which is also affordable housing.
Go ahead.
But.
All right. Any other comments? You have an extensive list there. If you can scroll back up to the top on that one. You've had, got good discussions about where we are, what we need to do. Is there anything that's missing right now on this priority list?
No. So I think one that, you know, making the list we came up with last year was something called elimination of blight.
Okay.
In the city. We may have been lumped one of these, but it was last year was standalone.
That's correct.
Yeah.
So I, and it ranked pretty high, so I just want to bring that up that it's not on this list and maybe you all may want to include that.
I think it was, it got looped in with the.
In your conversation.
Appearance.
One, better one for it?
It, it was looped into appearance.
Okay, it's in appearance?
Yes.
The Taylor board?
It, it was looped in, that's what I was thinking. But I, I really agree with Mr. Arnold. I think it needs its own space because we have a big problem with that.
Okay. Other thoughts on that one? Having, having a separate priority on elimination of blight?
Right, you're right.
Can you scroll up to the actual priority that talks about beautification and?
Okay. Let's go city, city, city beautification and appearance.
There you go.
That's the one?
Because in my mind, when I read that, I'm talking about like, like I'm not talking about flowers and trees. I'm talking about what the city.
Okay.
Looks like in distress.
Absolutely.
So maybe we can include, like maybe a parenthesis, anything that's in parentheses, I think is important. It's a, to have examples of what we want to focus on. So if it's the blight or if it's the abandoned houses, like what do we want to focus on as it relates to the blight? But I, I would rather include it like in that subtopic because it speaks to me saying blight.
What if it's city beautification, was cities slash appears, blight elimination? Something like that?
I also think when some, on the other side of that, I, I agree with you, Councilwoman. But on the other side of that, when I first, first thing I think about is downtown.
You think about what?
And some people, you know, would think of that, you know, downtown, downtown. And if you think of downtown, downtown is fine. But downtown is not the city.
And that also speaks, yeah, that also speaks to how we need to prioritize here about beautification. Our efforts, we've had a lot of efforts based on some of that. So I think it's up to us to say, what are we going to focus on in terms of the beautification and the appearance and the blight, like specifically?
So if we, if it says, it says city beautification, but if we say, I just lost it. If we say city and community beautification, to me, that would encompass the blighted houses. But to me, like I said, if just not being on the council, and I just read, I would see city beautification, I would think of downtown, city hall, the flowers, the, the beautiful architect that's there. That's what I would think of, not my community where I live or, or the different districts. I just, that's just me. And I'm pretty sure there's somebody else out there that is thinking the same thing.
What if it's community?
Yeah.
And not use city, just use community?
Right, yes, I agree.
Which is perhaps a all encompassing.
Right.
Okay, yes sir?
I'm, I'm glad that Councilwoman Matthews and Mayor Protem Jones pointed that out because honestly, I hadn't even thought about it that way or that that would be the perception that someone could have. Because in my mind, I'm thinking blight and unnecessary junk vehicles and, and the things that we. vehicles and the things that we need to address from a code enforcement issue. So I'm glad you guys pointed that out, that that, some, that if you said, expressed it that way, that somebody would think flowers downtown. I mean, I hadn't even thought about that, but I mean, I'm glad you pointed that out. That's, that's a very valid point to just sort of further design, define what we're speaking about.
So do we all agree that really what this is talking about is the, the control and elimination of blight and abandoned properties, less so about aesthetics?
Absolutely.
Aesthetic improvements and other ways? Can we, can we all kind of, kind of agree on that? Is that the point of this, is talking about blight and abandoned properties? Yes, ma'am?
I think if we put community, I think if we put community beautification, then that would encompass.
I, I think appearance, I'm sorry, whoever's.
Let's, let's do Ms. Taylor, then we go back to Ms. Matthews.
I'm, I'm, I agree with everyone, but I do also agree that we need to either add blighted and abandoned properties to that, or we just need to make it its own, because there's so much of a problem with that. And I do understand what Mayor Protem is saying about when we see city beautification, we think of downtown, but that may be because there's been such an effort to make that part of downtown beautiful, whereas we have the whole rest of the city that we need to make beautiful as well. So we definitely need to put blight somewhere.
Okay. Ms. Matthews?
I was just gonna speak to the mayor. Me personally, I don't wanna eliminate that appearance or beautification piece, I just wanna add to, include blight. Because I do agree, where I say it's not just flowers and trees, some areas still do need flowers and trees, I don't want us to eliminate that appearance, I don't want us to un-prioritize appearance as it relates to flowers and trees and planting and.
I agree. Good, I agree.
I think y'all are saying the same thing, we can have one category for both issues.
What if it's, again, doing a little worse, Ms. Matthews, if it's community, appearance, and blight elimination?
I like that.
Community, appearances, includes beautification, includes everything. And then blight elimination specifically targets that particular thing that you just been talking about.
Yeah, long as community is in there, I, I think.
Yeah.
I think, I think community needs to be in there, because.
So we go, community, appearance, blight elimination, so that's, that's what we revise. Okay? Are we good?
Good.
Good job.
We're good, can I just make this comment? I do, I do think we're good, and I don't disagree with that, but where I kind of struggle is, is if we, and I did the same thing you did, when I saw city beautification, I immediately thought of downtown because of the flowers and things, right? But where I tried to, to, to correct that is, if we're only thinking the city as in downtown, then we might need to reshape our thinking and not, not wordsmith it. You know what I'm saying? Because when we say the city of Goldsboro, it encompasses more than just downtown. So I think the city of Goldsboro is a proper term, we just need to make sure we have the right, the definition of a city. The city is not downtown, the city is the whole city, you know, all six districts. And that's where I struggle with just saying community, because then that mean I get caught up in, not that you're wrong, and I'm just telling my point of view, is that I get caught up in my community, you know what I'm saying, instead of the city focus, like we got caught up in downtown instead of the city.
I would like to see city and community, and this is what I was saying, because when, we can't change everybody's mindset, we can change our mindset, but when we look, I agree with you saying that, you know, we need to change our mindset with city. But then there are other people out there, if you just leave it like this, that are also have the mindset that some of us have, to think about the city. So that's why we need to put city and community, so that it will be clarified, we're talking about the city and our community.
City and community?
Yes.
We could just say Goldsboro, if that would matter.
We could just say city of Goldsboro.
Because that's what it is.
We are in Goldsboro, so whether we say city, but community also, and again, just having discussion.
Yes.
Community is also an inclusive, inclusive term.
Right.
Inclusive word.
I understand.
Is inclusive, and again, here, this is what I'm hearing, Mr. White talk about when we say city, I think a lot of you have said that, where we're talking about, there's a fault when you talk about downtown, when you talk about flowers and trees, and if it's community, and community is, is all encompassing. So.
It can be community, it, it can be community, I'm fine with it.
Thank you.
You know what I'm saying, I, I.
Are you okay? Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Jones is good, all right.
I mean, but I will tell you, leadership is, when, when leaders begin to change their mindset, usually people follow what leaders do.
Okay, all right, good discussion. Thanks, guys, pushed us a long, long time. Is there anything you got, gosh, how many different priorities are up here? Bunch of them.
I, I.
We're gonna get to, we're gonna get to 10.
Four, two, well.
We're gonna get to some high priorities.
I have, I have some priorities for, that I'd like to see for 2025. Number one is securing the city manager's position. And then number two would be the discussion and the implementation of the recommendations from the MAG consultant. So that could possibly go underneath employee retention, but the information they're offering is not just employee retention. So I wanna look at that MAG study further in detail and.
All right.
Look at the recommendations that they're making.
And again, the MAG study, you'll talk about that this afternoon, right? Or?
We're gonna, we're gonna figure that out.
We hope that we can.
Yeah, okay, yeah, okay, that's right, you, you got the, all right, so MAG study and city manager recruitment, getting that locked in. Does that sound okay, having those two added? Any objections to that? All right, all right, it's good. We're good. Anything else?
I, I would like to see that the city take the lead in quality of life issues, such as childcare, education. And I understand they say that education is not a part of our, our thing, but we have made it a part. And I think that everybody has constituents that, that are in the school system, so I think that should be a priority for us. So I think quality of life issues, and I'm basing this off of some of our major revenue streams.
Okay.
Childcare being one of those things that we're, we're in a childcare desert. So it hurts with bringing industry in, it's not just a social problem, it's also economic problem. So I think, I think I'd like to see the city council get after some quality of life issues.
Mr. White, we, we've got that covered in quality of life, so there's more opportunities for you, and then you want us to define what quality of life is?
Right, I wanted to define.
So I think, I think we, I think we're covering that.
All right.
Does that sound okay?
I'm fine with it.
Okay, good. I'm trying to switch you on. All right. We're right at 9:45 or so, so, Ed, please.
So, so we're about ready to go to poll.
That's what I'm transitioning to, how'd you know?
So I wanna hand out what you all made last year. This is your list, it was on page 29 of your packet. It includes everything you just talked about. And the question at hand for you all is, have a poll, that's.
Excuse me?
What we're gonna try to do is instantaneously have you, when, when, when we call you back to rate in order you feel are the most important elements. And from my perspective, you have a lot, you have at least 13 right now, you need to ask you all if you wanna add these two that Councilmember Weeks just brought up. You've eliminated one off this list, the elimination blight in city, combine that to the community appearance and blight, or city appearance and blight elimination. Do you want to have a poll? And you get, this poll, you'll see them all listed, and you get to move them around. And eventually you can get to your, your list in priority, and when you're done, you'll submit it, and then we'll see where everybody comes out to see kind of what your current priorities are. Do you want to have 13 or less, or you wanna modify this list further for your soon-to-be-taken instantaneous poll?
If, if we're trying to condense something down, is just a thought, I, I agree with the priorities we have here, and I think where you're gonna see a difference probably in polling would be to rearrange what our, I envision it being rearranging what's important, most important to us, because some of the items that's within our priorities, we've addressed, and now is not as big of a concern for alarm fire, so to speak, as, as some of the previous things. But if we're wanting to condense down, and this is just food for thought here, the, what Councilwoman Weeks mentioned about the manager, I mean, absolutely, she's 100% right with her comments, but that, that's already happening, as you know. I mean, we have a search underway, and that, that piece, that wheel's already turning, and that is a priority that's already there without having to be listed as one. And the, of course, the MAG and, and, and the, that organizational study, as well as the pay study and all that stuff, of course, that falls under the manager's duties more so than the council, so that's gonna be addressed as soon as we, I mean, that's gonna be, I would assume that would be the top priority of whoever the manager's going to be, is ultimately, that's gonna be at the top of their list for things to, to deal with, is the organization that the manager wants of his city.
I'm, I'm okay with it falling under employee recruitment and retention. I will say I disagree with him that the MAG information falls strictly under the auspices of the city manager, but I will say that both of those things could fall under employee retention and recruitment.
Okay, both? You okay with that?
Yes, sir, I'm okay with that.
All right.
So how many more, how many are we over?
Let's just say you have, so starting with Violet, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14 currently on your list that you're going to have to put in order, in priority.
But we've already, before I can do that, we've already added some things together, like.
Right, that's right.
So can we identify what we've already added? So it's gonna take our 14 down already? So can we re-go back over what we've missed?
Sure, you live, you, you have taken off this list, I handed out to you, elimination of blight in the city. You have added that to, I believe it's now city.
It's community.
Community appearance and blight elimination. And everything on this list is still, everything else is still standing.
Suggestion, or actually, I'll ask Matt this question, could we take the wastewater treatment plant expansion and the water sewer infrastructure and leave as one category?
You could combine those two.
That, that would, that would help, because, and I say that because we're already, the ball's already rolling on the wastewater treatment plant expansion, so that's not gonna fall off because it got lumped with something else. If you agree with that?
I agree with that, that's fine.
Is there anybody else? Are we, are we through with that? Okay. So that'll read WWTP plant expansion and, or slash water, water and sewer maintenance.
They're up, that's gonna be infrastructure. Wastewater treatment.
Something to that infrastructure.
Okay. Infrastructure, yeah, right here, okay.
Okay. So now you have, I think, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13.
What was, I'm sorry, this is gonna sound like I'm a dummy, what was the GF infrastructure?
General Fund, it was general.
General Fund, okay.
We combined that, we.
So could we combine the public safety equipment?
I combined those two.
Okay.
So what did you do with that?
Put that with, are you saying put maintaining GF infrastructure with public safety? Is that what, is that what you just said?
Because that's all CIP stuff.
Yeah, CIP related, if you could scroll up, I think we.
Thank you.
Keep going, keep going. There you go, maintain the general fund infrastructure, water sewer, then, yeah, all that's together, see?
Yeah, all the CIP stuff is.
You're okay, got it.
So now we're, are we at 10, 11?
Sure.
Got it.
I think we're, I think we're at 11 or 12.
Yeah, I count 12.
Maintain the general fund infrastructure. And water and sewer infrastructure maintenance are together. Is there anybody clear on what we have right now?
I have a question.
Yes.
So last year, how we did it, we had, we were able to get like red dots, yellow dots, green dots, and we were able to prioritize more than one thing as a high priority, and then be able to look at it like that. So are you saying we're just gonna make them in rank from, because, for data purposes, I guess?
It's gonna be a, it's gonna be a scientific, a real, a real poll, and it's gonna be, you can list, you can alter them in your order, and then we're gonna reveal, and then you can come back and talk about it further. So that's how we're gonna do the first go with this, is see how it shows up.
Just drag and drop and get them in the order. Okay.
You're okay with that?
Yeah.
And you're going to email the link to us?
It's, we will, I will hand that out when you, after break.
Perfect.
Everybody's clear? Matt?
I'm good.
Matt's good, all right. Mayor, good?
I am.
All right, let's take a 10-minute break. All right?
Joe, how about formally recess, recess us until 5 after 10?
That's good.
All right, we'll send a recess until 5 minutes after 10. Good enough time for you. Got enough time for you? If everyone's okay, we'll go ahead and come out of recess. The council, the council, in honoring a request from earlier regarding the agenda, we are, staff are currently working on the back end to get, to coordinate some speakers. But I would ask that council consider amending the agenda to move the sessions currently slated, the agenda to move the sessions currently slated for 3:30, 4:15, and 4:50. 4:50 when we comment and wrap up. But the 3:30 and the 4:15, moving 3:30 and the 4:15, moving those up to the 2 o'clock block, and everything from 2 to 2:30, moving that down to the 3:30 block. And that would, 3:30 block. And that would allow us to basically take an hour and a half, an hour and a half and flop it, and seemingly be able to check the boxes for everyone's needs. Does anyone have any concern on that? Mr. Livingston?
Just a comment, as we've reached out to MAG, and I'm guessing they're, are they not available at that time?
He is only available tomorrow from 9 o'clock to 2 p.m. He's not available by 2 p.m. today.
He's not available today at all? Okay.
So I asked that we move it-
I'm sorry.
Then-
I'm okay with y'all just keeping the agenda as it is. I just will let the council know that I have some concerns, and I have been reviewing what has been given to us, and I have additional questions. But I am 100% okay with you guys proceeding without me.
Is there any way we can move to tomorrow?
Yes, that's what I'm asking.
And that, I'll tell you what. Parlay this conversation for right now at the, let's give folks time to continue coordinating texting with the different speakers. Let's see when they're available. Matt, give me a hand sign or something if we have a solution, and we'll move to amend the agenda at that time. For now, we'll keep on rolling since, for some reason, I thought that was going to be the easier part since they were Zoomed, but, okay. We'll figure it all out, we'll continue trying, and if we're able to rearrange for tomorrow, then we'll just do that, or, y'all keep texting in the background and figure it out. But for now, let's keep rolling. Mr. Durham, floor's about here.
So here is the poll, and I have, people have put in all of your priorities, and if you can see down. And I'm going to hand out a link that I'm going to ask you to go to. And what you'll see is when we activate it, you'll have the ability to move and shuffle and put these in your order of preference. Once we get to seven votes, we can take a look at it and discuss it, see if you want to modify or change. But we thought this would probably be one of the quicker ways of finding out how you all came out and put them in order of preference.
Kelly, talk us through, open up a browser on our device of choice, and go to that website, web address is up on the screen, that pollev.com/kellyarnold. You got it, perfect. You got it under control. Thank you.
And you'll see it on the screen, and it says, once you get there, you'll see, this is, poll is activated.
Thank you.
And we're live. So wait through all to make sure you're able to get on.
Can we do it on our phones as well?
You can do it whichever way you want. Any way you can do it.
I'm used to doing these polls like this at the league, and some of the league classes will do that.
Let me know when you are live.
Now, soon we could just drag them around. Okay.
To the bar.
Okay.
And then type in that poll, that poll ev. Type in there.
And who?
And, not in search.
By who?
Yeah, type, type poll ev. And don't click it, just hit enter. Because I don't, I don't want it to search for it, I just want it to go there and say.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I'm going to work it out on paper and then transfer it to-
All right. Now, what's happened is it's treating it like a search instead of going straight to the address, and so, let's see. Try, try poll everywhere and then see if we can, no, you're not doing it. And just go to poll everywhere, and see. And then percentage may have tucked in just that back up, but Kelly- There you go. Perfect. And then you just, you just click on it, and then there's a-
Are we good?
There's an up arrow and a down arrow, so then you have to reorder.
Kelly, one thing that, are we live?
Yes.
Okay. One thing that I was going to mention and forgot before the break, when we're talking about the category for infrastructure maintenance, in which we agreed that would include the wastewater treatment plant, infrastructure is also our city streets, correct? So that would fall under that category, because that's certainly a high priority.
Which one?
The water sewer infrastructure maintenance would also include paving, city streets, and so forth and on, because it's all infrastructure.
Right. Streets are general fund, our general fund infrastructure, for, for anyone clarifying.
I don't see that one. Which one, it is not on the poll. Doesn't say that on the poll.
City equipment. Yeah. It's kind of lumped it all into one.
It looks like he labeled that category as WWTP, for the wastewater treatment plant.
Okay.
It's what he titled that, instead of leaving it.
No, let's be clear, so Kelly, when you were leaving the options, you left wastewater treatment plant expansion up there as its own, and then it appears that we lumped one together as police, fire, public safety, and all city equipment, and maintaining water sewer equipment, which would of course include the wastewater treatment plant. The, the main point is that we all understand what they are and that we're consistent in our interpretation.
Thank you.
Kelly, on the, on your poll-
Yes.
Wastewater treatment plant expansion remained its own item, and then we lumped all of the other general fund and utility fund stuff into one. Do you want us to prior, are you asking us to prioritize wastewater treatment plants separately, or was that just a-
Or do you need to edit it? Or do you need to edit it?
Um, if you don't mind, if you do it separately, and then when we see the results, we can, we can change.
Okay.
It's a little cumbersome to edit right now.
Okay.
Apologize.
All good. All good.
Okay. I just didn't want it to get lost.
Everybody's got it up? So I'm gonna activate. You hit the check box, zero. So as you, as you get finished, you wanna push to submit at the very end, and then we'll watch to see when seven show up there, and then we'll reveal the results. Because it won't, it won't be active until we reveal.
Okay, so we're doing all of them at one time, huh?
Yeah, you're just, yeah, ordering them, kinda moving them along.
Oh, my God. I, I know you hit one button and it disappears. It's frustrating.
Kelly, whatever you did just kicked all of us out.
It sure did.
And now it's asking for a name.
I know. I have to start off. If you hit back, I just hit back, and it took me back to the thing.
Oh.
Because we're not supposed to have our name up there.
I think, so Kelly, is this intended to be anonymous, or is this intended to be with name? Anonymous? Okay, it's now, okay, you can hit skip. Underneath the blue continue, there's a little skip. Just hit skip.
You hit the back button like she said, it'll take you back to it.
Okay.
But I'm working mine out on paper first, and then I'm gonna enter it.
Are you able to work it?
So should we just check whatever we want?
Yeah, I just hit the back button.
You, you have to go and... And move them in order, like each one you click, and then order up or order down?
Okay, up and down. Oh, I'm with you now.
Do you help them move?
Kelly. So, the main thing, yeah, is what you're asking. Is to have the city finance as a category real here?
Police, fire, oh, yeah, I can, it's this one. Police and fire, safety. Please, I'm so clear. Councilor Boyet has a good clarification. When it says police and fire, it's cut off. But that is included. That's your equipment and general fund infrastructure. Sorry about that.
The CIP category of...
Yes, is the one that says police and fire equipment.
He said that includes streets and everything.
Yes.
And then the one, look at the button for WWTP, that, that is gonna be your water sewer infrastructure maintenance as well as WWTP, right? For the poll category? Because I mean, it's, it's important that...
Yeah, no, I get it.
It's right, because this is gonna set the tone for what the group's doing. I think next, next year, we might need to go back to the green, the green, red, and yellow dots, as James pointed out.
The green, yellow, red dots did work really well. They really did. I realize that's not, that, that was a whole hour long...
Not that this is not bad, but this, you know.
I get it.
Well, that was an hour-long session specifically for that purpose. This is one piece of a larger pie. But that did work really well, and I would like to replicate that.
Got it.
Plus, we could see what each other was doing and go, no, I don't agree. Move your dot.